Get ready to climb back on the limb. Come on, man. Shake the dust off the food. Don't yawn and prolong what you got to do. And if you've been going through any negative phase, well, here's your opportunity for turning the page. Today's a new chapter. Write your plan. Make it end with the win. Give it all you got. But first, you gotta rise like a lurk in the light. Pick the dirt from your eyes and work for the prize. It's done, because we ain't even trying to lose. Let's go, man. Double hit snooze. It's time to wake up. 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 Tick tock, tick, come on. Tick tock, tick, let's go. Tick tock, tick, come on. Tick tock, tick. Woo! You can't wait around for someone to prove it. Now is the moment to begin your renewal, man. Feel alive with the vibe energized of the folks who you're coming by the white in your eyes. Hey, another day might waste away. Come on, let's get it going. Don't make delays. So bring me along and lift your arm high like Georgia. We'll get a piece of the pie. Begin it with a step. You'll get in it in a second. You win it like you never did it when you overslept. So right this minute, get right with it. What time is it? It's time to wake up.
Good morning, Birmingham. Oh, my gosh. Good morning, Birmingham. This is a regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. Today is February thirteenth. Happy Mardi Gras. Um, I want to do something a little different this morning. Um, traditionally, we wait till the end of the meeting to acknowledge our officers on duty. So, and typically, I have a hard time remembering to do that. So this morning, I'm going to do it first. Uh, this morning, we have James Hall from the downtown precinct, Marco Easley from East Precinct, Robert, and Robert Lewis from East Precinct. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this morning. This morning, our invocation will be delivered by Pastor Perry Makin of First Baptist Church Woodlawn, and our pledge of allegiance will be delivered by Counselor Hunter Williams. If you're willing and able, please stand.
That was a break. Eternal God, our Father, we come this morning thanking you first, Lord, for another day. Lord, we thank you for another privilege to assemble in this council chamber. Father God, as I pray this morning, I lift up this awesome council before you, Lord, asking that you crown their heads with wisdom, guide their hearts in a manner that all decisions made will be for your pleasing and for the benefit of this city.
Father, we pray your continued blessing be upon the people of this city and all these that are gathered in this chamber and throughout this building. Lord, we ask that you bless their labor and their labor not be in vain. Lord, we honor you and we praise you for your presence. We thank you for all that you are doing to move Birmingham forward. We thank you in the precious and perfect name of the risen Christ. We pray. Amen.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Can we have the roll call, please?
Good morning, sir. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Smithman.
Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Councilmember Woods.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Counselor Protem Alexander.
Good morning. Present.
Good morning. President O'Quinn.
Present. Thank you. This morning, before us, uh, we have the minutes of the October third, tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and thirty-first from 2023. Um, is there a consideration for approval of the minutes?
All the items.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
That item passes. Uh, the minutes from November seventh, 2023, through February sixth, 2024 are not ready. Chief, uh, do we have any communications from the mayor?
Yes, sir, we do. Good morning, Mr. President, Madam Protem. Good morning to the members of the council and good morning to the members of the public. Have a few brief, um, announcements on the mayor's behalf. Tomorrow is Valentine's Day, as we all know, and it's the time of year where we stop to appreciate and love on those who are special to us. On behalf of Mayor Woodfin, I'd like to take this time to wish a very happy early Valentine, Valentine's Day to the Birmingham City Council, to our city employees, and to all of the residents of the city of Birmingham. Mr. President, the City of Birmingham Department of Youth Services, as many of you have seen, is seeking two hundred teachers and educators who are either retired or they have flexible schedules to participate in an expansion of our Page Pals Third Grade Reading Initiative. Page Pals, the SOS version, is in need of teachers, um, who can provide one hour per day of in-school tutoring for reading over four weeks from February twenty-first to March the twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Participants will receive a one-time stipend of five hundred dollars for their commitment to advancing literacy among Birmingham's youth. Many people have seen the deadline was yesterday at five o'clock PM, but we do still have room for a few more qualified applicants. For more information, please visit www.birminghamal.gov/pagpals or call two zero five three two zero zero eight seven nine. Connect Birmingham. Residents and businesses can help the Birmingham Police Department to ensure a safer and better community with their new initiative, Connect Birmingham. This program allows BPD to collaborate with the community to investigate criminal activity faster. Community members can share and integrate their cameras with BPD for faster processing time when an event occurs. And there's no need to worry. Registering your camera doesn't mean anyone can access a live video stream. BPD investigators will only contact you if an event happens in your area. For details and to register your camera, please go to birminghamal.gov/ConnectBirmingham. And again, we encourage all of our residents, um, please, please consider becoming a part of this program. The, we've also tried to make the permitting process a little bit easier, Mr. President, Madam Protem, members of the council, and public members. The City of Birmingham's Department of Plan, Engineering, and Permits has launched a new online guide to assist developers and residents navigate that permitting process. This new one-stop portal streamline, streamlines the customer experience and provides instant site-specific information twenty-four hours a day. This frees up customer time at the permit counter, resulting in a faster, more efficient permitting process. P E P is also officially launched a new design for their online permit center webpage, which features a more modern, user-friendly, and intuitive look. This redesign will improve the user experience for submitting and monitoring permit applications. You can check it out at birminghamal.gov/PEP. Couple more notes, Mr. President. City of Birmingham will be hosting a blood drive, and we're encouraging those to help save a life by donating blood on Wednesday, February the twenty-eighth, at the Battle Auditorium from nine AM to three PM. To register, visit redcrossblood.org, look for Find My Drive, and enter the code B H M. Presenting donors will receive an e-gift card, a red cross shirt, and several other treats. Madam Protem, this is yours. Join Mayor Woodfin and Council Protem Wardine Alexander for a District Seven Town Hall meeting on Thursday, February the twenty-second. The community is invited to come out at six o'clock PM to Greater Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church located at twenty-one thirty-five Jefferson Avenue Southwest. We want to hear your concerns and talk about how we can best support the D-seven neighborhood. So look forward to partnering with Madam Protem. The Save the Day for the City of Birmingham's Easter Egg Hunt. The public is invited to come out on Sunday, March twenty-fourth, to Railroad Park from one o'clock to four o'clock PM. There will be music, food trucks, face painting, and more. So bring your baskets, young and old. Weekly note regarding uniform cart delivery. All single-family residents are now under the same uniform cart system. Businesses located on residential waste routes needing up to two carts and multifamily dwelling units of four or less may apply for carts at a fee per cart. Any business needing more than two carts or any apartments slash multifamily dwellings needing more than four carts will no longer be serviced by the City of Birmingham. DPW has been addressing issues on a case-by-case basis for residents who live on difficult terrain. You can go to www.birminghamal.gov/pickup for more information. And finally, the City of Birmingham will continue to keep residents informed about bulk trash pickup with daily updates online at birminghamal.gov/boltrash. Mr. President, Madam Protem, members of the council, that concludes the mayor's report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, at this time, without objection, we'll suspend the rules from, for a presentation from Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask Kim Richardson to join me at the podium. And while she's coming forward, um, it gives me great pleasure to invite the city council and other Birmingham officials, staff, and residents to join me in celebrating the latest accomplishment of one of our citizens for the considerable impact she's creating in making, uh, that she's making in a somewhat new role that may be different from the many other roles she's well-known for. Um, I first met Kim Richardson maybe twenty or so years ago. Uh, she was a grants administrator in our city, uh, in our community development department. And later, our paths crossed more through our mutual love of visual art. And in fact, she serves right now on our Birmingham Museum of Art Board of Directors. And I don't know that she still does, but she has also served on our library board. You, you do not?
I rolled off.
Okay, she rolled off. Okay. But, but many of us across the city know her for her world travels and her Facebook blogs from all these places all over the world. And, um, you know, she's also well-known as an exceptional grant writer, helping nonprofits pull down the big bucks. But she has lately reinvented herself yet again in the most noble of pursuits, that of promoting self-healing, self-regulation, and peace through teaching the practice of yoga in some of the most unlikely places. So I'd like to, uh, read part of this resol, well, all of, almost all of this resolution. Whereas it is in the sense of this legislative body to recognize the quality of life, that the quality of life in the communities across this great city is enriched by the diligence and compassionate commitment of those individuals whose singular purpose is the care and welfare of others. Whereas attendant to such concern and in full accord with its longstanding traditions, the Council of the City of Birmingham is justly proud to congratulate Ms. Kimberly Richardson on her November twenty twenty-third, three distinguished recognition as a certified yoga therapist by the International Association of Yoga Therapists and for successfully completing over eight hundred hours of training, mentorship, and practicum in an accredited yoga therapy program. Whereas Mrs. Richardson, author and business owner, has the excellence of being Alabama's first African-American certified yoga therapist and is one of only twelve certified yoga therapists in the state of Alabama. In 2023, she was honored as one of four national finalists for I A Y T's SIVA Award in recognition of her service efforts in under-resourced communities. And whereas Ms. Richardson is currently involved as an artist in residence for the University of Alabama's Arts and Medicine Program, where she offers yoga therapy for youth with complex needs in the Behavioral Health Unit of Children's of Alabama, she facilitates a weekly yoga-for-cancer class for patients in treatment and survivors through the oncology department at U A B as part of the protocol for a U A B research study team looking at the impact of yogi breathing for individuals with ALS. And she is initiating a series for veterans at the Birmingham VA. And whereas throughout Birmingham, Ms. Richardson, who is a true believer in the power of yoga therapy, has been an innovator for creating greater access to yoga. She has steered a pilot for the Alabama Department of Corrections, uh, Birmingham City Schools, the Birmingham Police Department, and she's currently hosting a weekly yoga, yoga class at Don Hawkins Rec Center. She serves diligently on the Board of Directors of Awakening Yoga Spaces and is the proud owner of Yes U Yoga and Wellness LLC. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Birmingham, with Mayor Randall L. Woodfin concurring, congratulates Ms. Kimberly Richardson for her special recognition, and we thank her for her devoted attention to the well, health and wellness, uh, of the city of Birmingham, adopted this thirteenth day of February, two thousand twenty-four, at the recommendation of Counselor Carol E. Clark. Uh, I'd like to move the resolution.
Second.
This is for you see all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Thank you. Motion.
Aye.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you. And now, Ms. Richardson, if you would like to share a few words.
Sure. Thank you so much. Good morning, Counselor, President O'Quinn, Madam Protem, and the members of the council. It's a pleasure to come before you, as always, the mayor's staff as well, um, to advocate once again for the city of Birmingham, this time just in a new capacity. You've seen me over the years as a past member of the library board, past president, is also a member of the art museum and director, um, member of the, um, officers of the art museum Board of Directors, advocating for the cultural life of the city of Birmingham. And this time, we want to roll in the health and wellness of the city of Birmingham and its residents. And our focus is on creating access, moving yoga outside of the traditional walls of yoga studios, taking them into hospitals, parks, community rec centers. I'm a district of, I'm a resident of District Two, teach yoga at Don Hawkins Rec Center, and it's a free class. So we're removing the barriers because although we talk about health and wellness, we talk about, um, nutrition, we talk about movement, which are all very important. I think one of the things that we need to continue to talk about is managing stress and getting enough sleep. And I think everybody in the room can probably relate to that. So I'm very thankful to, uh, Counselor Clark for inviting me to be recognized. I think it's very significant because it's important also during Black History Month that we're talking about diversity and inclusion and representation within this profession. And, um, I'm very thankful to U A B's Arts and Medicine Program for allowing me to go into so many institutions through Children's of Alabama, through U A B Oncology, and now through the Veterans Administration. So I hope we'll continue to keep health and wellness as a forefront. We know the health disparities. We talk about them all the time. And I hope we'll continue to look to yoga as one of the ways that we can help support our youth, our elders, because yoga is not just for the thin and flexible. It's for anyone who can breathe. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Protem Alexander would like to offer some comments.
If you'll just wait, Ms. Richards. I want to thank Counselor Clark for bringing this honor forward for you. Um, it's been such a delight to serve with you and see your work throughout the city. I met you first when you probably didn't even know it, and that was, uh, reading your blogs about your travel and just thought, oh, Lord, if I could just put any of these places on my bucket list, I would be so excited. So you opened up an avenue for me just through your blogging. And then you held my hand when I first became a board member for the, uh, library board. So I thank you for that. And your grant writing, I can't tell you how many organizations you have helped and, um, paved the way for them to, uh, gain those funds, to enrich their, um, their, their projects. So thank you so much. Thank you, Counselor Clark, for bringing this to us. And now you're taking us into a whole new realm with the yoga. So I look forward to being able to join you and hope everyone else will too. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ms. Richards, for, um, Richardson, right?
Yes.
For your service, um, and the restorative practices of, of yoga, um, you know. And I, I hope that the Birmingham City Schools could get you in, you know, to the school systems and, because as you stated, it is very important in the healing process and the restorative practices when it comes to yoga, you know, healing, um, you know, community. So thank you, Counselor Clark. Definitely will be reaching out, um, to, to speak with you further.
Thank you so much, Counselor.
Counsel Williams.
Kim, I have to give you accolades as a District Two, uh, resident. And thank you for what you, uh, do. You highlight the best part of District Two. And, um, I know the difference that you make, uh, at Don Hawkins is, uh, probably felt not only within that immediate area, but really all throughout the community. So thank you for being here and thank you to, uh, my colleague for bringing you up here today so that we can, uh, give you the, the accolades that you deserve.
Thank you so much. And I also want to give a shout out to Director Chevy Lee, who's the director at Hawkins Rec Center, who was so open to the idea when we approached him about offering free yoga classes at Don Hawkins. He said, when can you start? So very appreciative of him allowing us to start that initiative at one of our city rec centers.
Counselor Smithman.
I have two questions for you. Can you come to Memorial Park? Because I want you. Um, and number two, I think, well, actually, three. I think number two, it'd be good if you go to the rec center, um, summer camps and help the kids with that. I think that'd be good for them to wake up in the morning, because you never know what kids are dealing with before they go to camp. I think that'd be good. And teaching them to stretch, because a lot of times adults will work out, but we won't stretch. And so when we get older, literally, our bones will ache.
Yes.
And so, um, I just want to thank you for bringing that to people of color, um, communities of color. I think that's very important. And then number three, can you come and do a yoga session for us? Because I know sometimes we may need that before council meeting. You know, I, I think that'd be great. So, um, but no, seriously, thank you for what, for what you do. And I would love to do more collaboration with you and help you to promote your business in any way.
Thank you. The answer is yes to all, um, especially working with our youth. I am a registered children's yoga teacher. And there was a ban, if you're not aware. There was a thirty-year, nearly thirty-year ban against yoga in Alabama public schools up until 2021. And that was repealed. And so we were the first ones to write a proposal, um, to, and submitted it to Birmingham City Schools to start a pilot program that started in 2022. So we love to work with children. I wish I had gotten it at a much younger age. So we're definitely open to working throughout the community to create as much access as possible. So thank you.
Counselor Moore.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to say thank you for what you're doing. Um, I know that, you know, taking the time to just slow down, uh, is something that, you know, we all need to make sure that we're practicing, um, and just being mindful, um, and, you know, meditating and things of that nature. Um, and so I just want to say thank you for what you're doing over at Don Hawkins. Uh, I know my mom, she's actually had an opportunity to come and participate in your classes. And so, um, thank you for, for offering this. I did want to ask the question, though, um, just again, so everybody knows when they can actually come to Don Hawkins to participate, uh, in this activity. When does that take place again?
That's on Wednesday evenings every week at six thirty PM at Don Hawkins Rec Center. Mats are available, so there's no barriers. Um, it's a class that's open and free to the public. If you'd like to make a donation, you can make a donation. But we've received lots of support from the award that I won through the association that provided yoga mats, that provided funding to help cover the cost so that we could make it free. So Wednesdays at six thirty, if you don't have any plans for Valentine's Day tomorrow evening, feel free to join us for Valentine's Day practice.
So there's no excuse there.
No excuse.
Well, I just, again, want to say thank you to Counselor Clark for bringing this to our, um, our, our knowledge. Um, I think that risk and, you know, mindfulness is the new, uh, resistance. And so we need to take that up. So thank you.
Thank you.
There we go.
Absolutely.
And, and just a reminder to folks, um, Counsel Williams, Don Hawkins Rec Center is located in the eastern area of Birmingham On Demand service area, right? Yeah. Okay, so for anybody who doesn't know about Birmingham On Demand, um, it, it's, it's basically Uber or Lyft. Um, and we have two service areas, downtown, and there's a eastern area. With, so if you're interested in going to Don Hawkins Rec and, uh, Rec Center and need a, a ride, download the Bia app and you can get a ride, uh, on a, one of the Birmingham On Demand vans for a dollar fifty. So round trip, three bucks to get to the Don Hawkins Rec Center if you live out in that area. Counselor Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add, I wanted to really appreciate you for your consistency, like you've been bringing this and really working over a long time to kind of show this to more people, get more people engaged. And so, um, want to second a shout out to Director Lee. Uh, does an incredible job out at, at Don Hawkins. And, uh, we appreciate you providing the service in District One. Um, but just really that consistency of kind of making that available, getting that word out, like I've been seeing it for a long time. And, uh, hopefully more and more people continue to get involved. And, uh, just let us know how we can support you going forward.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time this morning. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Abbott.
I just want to thank you for your amazing versatility. You know, you have done so many interesting things that the rest of us only wish we knew how to do. And, uh, yoga's probably one of them. Yeah, I was, I'm in agreement. Yeah, I would love, I think it would be just a hoot to see this group doing yoga.
I'd love that.
Especially together. Of course, getting us together might be hard. But, uh, I just want to thank you because all of the things that you have done that I'm aware of are things that have helped other people and have helped the city of Birmingham. And so I, I deeply appreciate that. You know, I wish that there were more people who were willing to give and give and give and give and, and do it in such interesting ways. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Namaste.
As long as we, as long as we all, we don't have to be thin or flexible.
You don't have to be thin. Or all you have need to do is be able to breathe. We can teach it in a chair. We have all types of accessible variations that we can do that, um, we work with folks who are wheelchair users, all types of accessibility. So I really do want to continue to promote the message that it really is available to anyone who'd like to try it out. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'll read the statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remainder, for remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clark, could you please read the items designated as consent?
Okay. Our consent agenda starts on page two with items one, two, and three. Skip over to page three. We have item four on consent. Page five, item five is on consent. Page six, item six is on consent. Page eleven, we have items seven and eight on consent. Page twelve, we have item nine on consent. Page thirteen, we have items ten and eleven on consent. Page fourteen, item twelve is on consent. Page twenty, item thirteen is on consent. Page twenty-six, item fourteen is on consent. Page twenty-eight, item fifteen is on consent. Page twenty, I'm sorry, page thirty, we have items eighteen and nineteen on consent. Page thirty-one, we have items twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two on consent. Please note that item twenty-one was recommended by Budget and Finance. Page thirty-two, we have items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five on consent. And we have a correction on the GL account for item twenty-five. It should be, I think it says offer revenue recovery funds. Uh, the account number zero zero one underscore zero one nine underscore zero 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 eight zero point five three six dash zero four zero. And that's grant match expended. And that's grant match expenditure. It's item twenty-five. And skip over to page thirty-three and we have items twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight on consent. Please note on items twenty-seven and twenty-eight, we are striking US from both items. That's items twenty-seven and twenty-eight. It should be just Department of Health and Human Resources and Alabama Department of Environmental Management. Page thirty-four, items twenty-nine and thirty are on consent. Page thirty-five, items thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three are on consent. Page thirty-six, we have items thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven on consent. Page thirty-seven, we have items thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one on consent. Page thirty-eight, we have items forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five on consent. Page thirty-nine, items forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, and fifty are on consent. And we conclude the consent agenda with item number fifty-one on page forty.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we please remove item number twenty-four on page thirty-two as well as item twenty-seven on page thirty-three?
I'm sorry. Page thirty-two, item twenty-four, and page thirty-three, item twenty-seven.
Twenty-four and twenty-seven. Can you give me one second to delete those items? Twenty-four and twenty-seven. And I have to make a correction when you're done, Counsel, President.
Okay, Counsel Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to remove number, item number nineteen and twenty-nine.
It's page thirty, item number nineteen. And page thirty-four, item twenty-nine. Counsel Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to remove item twenty-three and item twenty-five.
Page thirty-two, item twenty-three and twenty-five.
Can we take off item twenty-six on page thirty-three? And then, item... Item thirty-one on page thirty-five. Okay, I was already taken off, but those.
Okay. I'm going to go back through those just to make sure that we covered all of them. Page thirty, item nineteen. Page thirty-two, items twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Page thirty-three, items twenty-six, twenty-seven. Page thirty-four, item twenty-nine.
That's the President. We could put twenty-nine back on consent.
Okay.
Twenty-nine, item twenty-nine. Back on consent.
Okay.
Twenty-nine.
All right. Page thirty-five, item thirty-one. I believe that's it. You had a correction, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, the correction, I'm sorry, is the funding source should be applied to item twenty-six and not twenty-five. So, twenty-five will stay as typed and written on the agenda and that change for the GL should be applied to item number twenty-six.
So, item twenty-six is ARPA Recovery Funds?
That is correct.
And we don't have a correction for item twenty-five?
No.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Oh, we're only striking District One from twenty-five? So, we are striking just District One from twenty-five?
Okay. Thank you. All right.
Say it again.
Item number twenty-five was striking District One, is my understanding?
It's off consent, Counsel Woods, so we'll discuss it. At this time, are there any members of the public that wish to remove an item marked for public hearing that is on the consent agenda? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am? Again, this is items that specifically marked for public hearing. So, it would appear on the agenda with a PH next to the item.
And while she comes, I believe the item is number seventeen that she would like to speak to, but that's a public hearing item that's not on consent, correct? Or permanent operations item that's not on consent?
That's correct.
So, we would be able to speak to that?
Yes. So, it's not a public hearing item, it's an item of permanent operation, but it is not on the consent agenda, item seventeen.
And for clarity's sake, would community members be able to speak to it?
No, it's not a public hearing.
Got you.
Right?
Okay. So, we could, y'all can have, y'all can have a seat.
So, can you confirm whether item seventeen is the item that you are interested in?
Yes, item seventeen.
Okay, so if we could have a member of the staff speak with them in the corridor just to hear their concern, but it's not on the, it's not a public hearing item. It's an item of permanent operation. So, members of the public don't participate in the deliberation of items of permanent operation.
Got you. So, we could have somebody.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Seeing no others, do we have a motion in a second for?
Move the items for consent.
Alexander and Counsel President, Counselor Smithman for the second. And voting should be open on your iPads right about now.
It's not popping up, but I'm aye.
Okay. Can you look at Counsel Smithman?
Oh, wow.
How would you like to vote, Counsel?
Aye. Aye.
Counsel Tate? All right, Counsel Moore? Counsel Moore-Clark? Thank you. All right, that vote should be up for the consent agenda.
Nice, our board's working again. So, that item is unanimous and passes. Consent agenda is approved. First item, Mr. Clark.
Okay.
Let me back up a second. Without objection, I would like to take item fifty-two, the addendum item, out of order.
Okay. Item fifty-two, which is the addendum item. It's an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute a redevelopment agreement with Movement Incorporated, under which the movement will purchase properties formerly known as Scott Elementary School located at fourteen forty-five Hibernian Streets, Birmingham, Alabama three five two one four, and the old North Pratt Community Center located at three fifty Beach Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama three five two one four. For redevelopment to serve as community development center, which will provide healthcare, economic development, education, and social services to the surrounding community. The city has agreed to make the property available to the Movement Incorporated at a use value of twenty-five thousand dollars and this is an item of permanent operation. I need UC to entertain today.
Hello, UC, second?
All right, it's Counsel Smithman and it was that Counsel Clark?
Clark.
All right. And?
No.
Then he opened it up.
Item.
One second, please. And it's opening. Should be open for voting right now for UC.
I'm aye. I vote aye, Ms. Clark.
Counselate?
We need.
I need UC for everyone to entertain it today. The vote is different, but for, to get the hearing today, I need UC. It's just that UC. Oh, we'll have to hold it over to next week.
Can you reset the vote?
Reset it? Sure. All right. All right, now it should be back open again.
I vote aye, Ms. Clark.
Okay. Counselors Moore, Tate, and Woods. Okay, she's asked.
I vote aye. It's not popping up on the iPad.
All right, that vote is unanimous. So, I need a motion on the item. Can deliberate. Counselor Smithman and then that was Counsel Protem Alexander?
Yes.
All right, so the item is before you for deliberation.
Yes, Ms. Clark.
Thank you, Madam Protem. This is an exciting opportunity, I believe, for North Pratt. I did attend Scott School, which has been just sitting there dying, you know, declining in a very prominent location on Highway seventy-eight. It's not clear to me on the map if, whether this includes the community center property or if it's just a school property. Can someone clarify that?
Good morning. My name is Cornel Wesley, proudly serves the Director for the Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. Your question, Counsel Clark, was whether it included both properties on the site?
Well, I'm looking at the map and I can see the footprint of the school, but there was some concern from people here that the conveyance includes the community center.
It does.
So, it does include the community center?
There are two addresses listed, yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So, I don't know that we, I mean, do we normally sell community centers that are being used by the community? I'm just curious.
In this case, this particular property has been as much dilapidated and has amazing or unique roofing issues as well as plumbing. It was our belief as a department that both parcels should be included to have the maximum impact for what the project is being proposed. And the current use is not one that currently benefits the city from an income perspective. This will yield different results.
Okay, but did you all talk to the people who use the community center? I just know my Insley president loves to use the community center at Pratt. And there are other people who use the center regularly. So, did you all consider the uses that? I know there's a lot of upkeep and the community center program was discontinued because it, the community basically has to pay for capital improvements and I don't know the condition of it today. I can imagine it's probably not great, but, you know, were they at least a part of the conversation? Were they notified that, hey, this is going to go away? Or is the new user going to make allowances for some of the activities that the community enjoyed to be able to continue on the property? I don't know, I'm just wondering, is there a way for them to continue to have access to the facility even under new ownership? Is that a consideration or thought?
That specific question would be to the acquiring party if approved today. What I can say is that the city of Birmingham does not have an agreement in place for the unique uses that it has been experiencing. There's not having an agreement in place for probably over a decade. And so, it was our opinion that this would be the best and highest use to sell the property for this specific purpose. Now, again, to your second point, Pastor Chris Erskine is here and can speak to his willingness to include the existing occupants and their activities in his plan.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to just ask, you know, will there be some accommodation for, you know, the, I think seniors get together and play games there is what I know. I don't know. I don't see Pastor, Pastor, oh, there you are. So, I was just wondering, Pastor, do you feel like the, there will be an accommodation made for the community or the uses of the, the current uses of the facility?
Just one other anecdote, there was a new community center built in that area to accommodate those citizens as well.
Okay.
So, there is a new, this is not taking away.
A new facility, okay.
That is correct.
Okay. Well, that's enough. I'm good because I know the other one was really old. Thank you.
No, sorry, this is not a public hearing. Other counselors that have questions about the item. Counsel Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm a little confused because at the economic development meeting, I was not aware that a community center was involved. It was described to us as just the school. And I believe Ms. Clark was in that meeting too, which is probably why she was surprised that this did include a community center. I just want to point that out, that the presentation was specific to it being the Scott School and not an open community center. So, for whatever that's worth.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So, per Staff Counselor Williams, staff said that that was included in the information that was shared. Staff is here now to speak to that if you have questions about it.
I don't have questions and my comments remain. It was not, it was not presented as such. Thank you.
Other questions? Counsel Woods.
If we could, I guess I'm interested in what is, what's the proposed use? What's the plan for?
Pastor Erskine, would you like to come and talk to?
About what the overall plan is for the property?
Mr. President, the entire council, Chris Erskine, eleven forty Pratt Highway in the beautiful city of Birmingham. We have a portion of our membership here and I would ask that they withstand. Many of you are asking for plans for this... Many of you are asking for plans for this project. Scott School has been dormant for over twenty-five years. Our present thought for this particular community center, which we learned within the last two weeks was a part of this. We actually went into this thinking it was just Scott School. We came to find out that the last bidder actually had this piece of property included in that sale. And so to be great stewards on behalf of the city, they did not want to offer us a deal that they did not offer the pass individual. And so for us, a health clinic in this property is what we're proposing. Dr. Elaine Colby is here, if she could speak to what this building is going to be used for. I also had an opportunity to speak to some of the citizens who have concerns about the use presently. We spoke briefly before council, that we are open to hear any concerns that they have and work with them, uh, on those concerns to make sure that whatever is feasible can still be happening in this building. But the building needs some work, and so we want to make sure that, number one, it's safe for us to have these type of events in there, but also to do a due diligence for the entire community to be involved. Uh, if permitted, Dr. Colby is here to speak.
Hello, um, my name is Elaine Colby, and I am a family medicine physician here in Birmingham. I'm from Birmingham, Alabama. I was born at Saint Vincent's. My mother's family is from Bessemer and Pleasant Grove. My dad grew up in Shelby County. I went to Auburn for undergrad, although my brother went to Alabama. Um, I went to UAB for medical school and graduated in two thousand and six, so I've been practicing family medicine, um, since two thousand and six. And in Hawaii and San Antonio, I've worked for the Army. I've worked for Kaiser Permanente. I transferred from the, uh, San Antonio Military Medical Center to the Birmingham VA and worked in the Women's Clinic in two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen. And then I moved into private practice, and I've been working, uh, full-time outpatient adult primary care at Southview Medical Group on the campus of Saint Vincent's downtown. And I have been called by a higher power to help create exactly this type of community health center that Pastor, Pastor Erskine has been working on, on his own. I have been working on this for five to twenty years. I was invited to the Movement Fellowship Church by a patient of mine and my medical receptionist in October last, to twenty twenty-three. And the moment I walked in the door, I knew that this was going to happen. I just knew it. And I, so I am so excited to be here today. And Kim Richardson that spoke earlier, I read about her last summer in the, uh, AL.com and filed her information away to one day reach back out to her. Our vision for this community health center is to do something new and innovative that is going to be brilliant and outstanding, because the commitment, the investment from this community is what is going to make it work. In today's medical industrial complex, individuals are a number in the system. In our society today, we feel isolated, fragmented, in a difficult time in our world of uncertainty and change. The medical system wants to cure everything with a pill or a procedure or AI, but true healing, wellness, health comes from individual connections, community networking, healthy lifestyle, healthy eating, uh, healthy cooking, movement, music, mindfulness, yoga, self-awareness, self-compassion. And that takes in commitment from the individuals and the communities and wanting to come together to do this, and that is exactly what we have here. it, we will do great things. We have been talking about creating programs, creating, inviting people from the community to learn about different conditions, diabetes, dementia, dementia care, elderly care, uh, gr, um, farming, gardening, cooking, farm-to-table. Uh, we will create teams that will master these tasks and go out into the community to teach others. We will have all sorts of, um, educational sessions at, at this location, in addition to authentic, genuine primary care. And this can also serve as a training site. I have with me today, um, a medical student from UAB who's doing his, um, third year of family medicine clerkship rotation, and I have, uh, we can get, um, involvement from UAB, from Sanford School of Nursing. I mean, this, the, I could go on, I, I mean, I could talk for hours on all.
Please don't.
The, yeah, all the potential. So I think, uh, point.
Yes.
Explained. Thank you for your time.
Right. So Counselor Williams, um, do I understand you correctly that this item actually was not brought before the Economic Development Tourism Committee?
No, that's, it was brought before Economic Development Tourism. It was not, it was not presented as the community center was going to be sold. It was presented as just the Scott School was going to be sold. I just wanted to notate that, um, because I was surprised, as it apparently my colleague who also was in the meeting, that this included a community center. Now, I don't have an issue, um, with, you know, with that transfer, especially if there's another community center in the area, but it, but I just wanted to point out, um, that I also was surprised, just like my colleague was, because that was not part of the presentation.
So, um, the appraisal that we received, um, that was performed in two thousand and twenty, did that also include the community center? They, so the, the total, I asked about the, the parcel size, uh, yesterday in that, in that appraisal, um, I think the total property size was three point five, roughly three point five acres is the. So the community center would add another acre of property?
No, sir, it was not, that appraisal did not cover the community center from a value perspective.
Has the community center been appraised? Counselor Abbott?
Yesterday, at Budget and Finance, there was no mention of the community center. We discussed Scott School repeatedly and often, and then we have this document today, and the community center, like, we have a drawing of the Scott School property, which we're all pretty familiar with. Where is this community center? I mean, we didn't even discuss it, it was not mentioned, it was in the written description, but no one mentioned it. So, and, and it keeps this document that we've received this morning, it says, it keeps referring to A, Exhibit A, but Exhibit A is only Scott School. There's no community center in Exhibit A, unless maybe it was on the back page and it got left off. So it is peculiar.
Counselor Clark?
Yeah, um, I, I guess from the valuation standpoint, you know, in an urban renewal and redevelopment area, the council can determine a use value, which is what's being proposed because of the, uh, extent of renovations and rehabilitation that's warranted to, to make the redevelopment happen. But I guess my question about the, uh, community center property is, is that it's also in the urban renewal boundaries, because, you know, there's a, there's a urban renewal and redevelopment plan that has to be adopted to allow us to write down the cost of land to its use value. So is this property also inside the boundaries of the urban renewal, the North Pratt, whatever it is, it's the amended, amended, and amended urban renewal plan? Um, I guess as long as it's within those boundaries, we can, you know, write down the, the value, the, the cost to the use value.
Counselor Woods?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to, I think, circle back and just, just to say, I think we all support what y'all are doing, have a great appreciation for, uh, what y'all are proposing. I think it is important for everybody to understand clearly, uh, what's being voted on and make sure everybody's on the same page there. So, uh, did just kind of want to add that, but, uh, I think, you know, ultimately to solve a lot of the issues that we see is going to require some individuals, community to lead in some spaces, and so appreciate your willingness to do that. Um, but did want to circle back just to get clear on, like, what, what activity is actually happening in the, in the, in the rec center and, um, um, and I guess just also gauging everybody's comfort with where we are, because I think, um, I wouldn't want anybody to ask me to vote on something I wasn't clear on, and I, I wouldn't ask anybody else to do that, but, uh, I guess if I, or somebody could just restate specifically, uh, what's in, uh, if we're good on valuation, uh, et cetera, et cetera, but, um, just to make sure everybody's clear, uh, and that I'm clear.
Chief Sparks? So could you restate your question again, Counselor?
Uh, just one, you know, making sure that we're all clear on the boundaries of what's being sold, uh, looks like the school and then this adjacent, uh, rec center, which pulls up as a civic league. Uh, two, you know, what, what activity is actually taking place now, uh, and then making sure we have something in place to, uh, transfer those folks over to the, to the new rec center if they are currently, uh, active in that space, uh, and just making sure everybody's clear on all the ambiguity, so.
So on question number one, Mr. Wesley will come and speak to that. On question number two, we need to get the advice of the Office of the City Attorney, um, on some of, on some of the activity.
Your question again, Counselor.
Uh, just if you could kind of restate, clarify exactly, uh, what is, what's being sold, and if we're good on valuation?
So from evaluation, because to Counselor Clark's point, it is an urban renewal, that is determined by the body. Uh, and so this is not a typical, uh, real estate transaction due to where it sits in the urban renewal footprint. So it is the, the luxury of this body determine the value of it. Your second question?
Uh, well, I mean, two, you know, just as far as a, is, I'm, I'm assuming IO is stamping this as recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we're good there, and then two, just if we're, if we're moving people, we need to make sure we have a communication plan to, to let them know, uh, you know, where they can continue their activities and things like that, so. I think the second question he was, he was directing, um.
To the City Attorney.
I have Attorney Foster respond to question number two.
Morning, Counselors. Alan Foster from the City, Office of City Attorney. The reason that the new center was built was to replace the need of that community. Uh, the existing center is, the city did not feel that feasible to continue to invest in a building that has been over thirty-plus years, maybe forty years old. There's a lot of repair, uh, the roof alone may be between eighty and a hundred thousand dollars to do, not including the plumbing that is needed in this situation. The current group that is, um, managing, for lack of a better description, at this point, the facility is not in direct contract with the city, and so there's a lot of profit that is being made that is not being received by the city. As well, so the city's intent was to only manage the new facility, and we're just that, that we, because there is a redevelopment decision for that area blind, and this building is attached to it, and there's some, a lot of dilapidation in that building, that was the intent of connecting the two.
Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have a question for the City Attorney, and this is more procedural. Um, well, first of all, for, for everybody that's standing, thank you all for being here. You know, this, this is more to do with the valuation of this property. I think that what you guys are, uh, aiming and projecting to do, uh, will, just like, um, you know, it, it's a rising tide brings all ships up, and I think that that saying speaks for itself with, with what you guys' mission is and what you guys are going to do for this community. But from a procedural standpoint, if this is in an urban renewal district and this body determines the value of this piece of property, and I'm asking you as our attorney representing us, how are we able to determine that without any information, including the actual contract, not even having in the exhibit the piece of property, uh, or pictures? What Mr. Foster just stated, Attorney Foster stated is that, that it needs a new roof and the building's thirty years old. However, we have not received any information about the structure, its utilization, it's not even in the exhibit in the contract. How can we in good faith make a determination of what the value is of a piece of property that we are kind of just being told about?
Attorney King, for just a moment. Um, security is asking members of the audience to please be seated. Thank you. Attorney King?
So it is my recommendation under thirty-six twenty-five A seven that we go into executive session to discuss potential litigation as well as some real estate concerns.
Motion for executive session.
Chairman made the motion.
Yes.
And Williams, Councilmember Williams? Second? All right, let's do a roll call here. Counselor Member Abbott? Counselor Member Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate?
Stepped out.
Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods?
Aye.
Counselor Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counselor President O'Quinn?
All right.
And that's the College Chair?
Yes, reconvene at the College Chair. Thank you, we'll go into executive session.
Yes sir. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Present.
Councilmember Moore.
Uh, present.
Councilmember Smithman. Council, I'm sorry, I'm taking, I'm taking them both here. Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Woods.
Woods.
Council Pro Tem Alexander.
Present.
Council President Oakley.
Uh, present. Okay, so, um, we're going to...
Council President Oakley, can I interrupt you once, quick second? I just need Attorney King to state the executive order, I mean, executive order, executive session, reason, so that we can have it on the record.
Okay.
Right, the grounds for executive session under thirty-six twenty-five A seven were potential litigation in the negotiations of the sale of real property.
Okay, and this is in regard to the addendum item, item number fifty-two, um, so we'll re-uptake, uh, consideration of that item. Um, this is not an item of public hearing, but it's my understanding that we have, uh, folks in attendance who would like to speak to that item. So, as the presiding officer, um, it's, it's my determination to allow a spokesperson for that group to come at this time and, uh, voice their concerns. And I would ask that you state your name and address and, um...
My name is Donald Payne, and, uh, my address is eight thirteen Eighteenth Way Southwest, Birmingham, Alabama. I'm one of the honorary members, they had, you can have one on there, and that's where I come in at. Now, we, I beg to differ from when the young man came up and said the place was dilapidated, and he said a lot of things that's bad about this place, and this place is not that at all. It's not that at all. We do a lot for the community, we had a big old, uh, with all the children out, had a, for the community, had a big old, had rented all kind of things we have out there. We give away money every year, every year we go out to and ask the young lady here to find members of the community that need money, and we give it to them, we give money to Children Village every year. And then if you go in there, we have it for repasses. We have this place we rent out for the senior citizens, because I'm old now, and I'm one of them, and we come out on every Thursday night, Bassmasters come, we got a place for A A A that comes out. They, they rent this place from us because the founding fathers of this place, most of them are deceased, but they would say that this place got to them because the city told them they charged them a dollar per household. When they gave them, they said, "Now, you got to take care of this place, we're not gonna do anything, you do it." And that's what we've been doing, we've been paying the rent, I mean, we've been paying all the utility bills. We've been doing everything, the commodes and everything, we just paid about four hundred dollars just for the floors to get clean. And if you come and see this place when these people rented, it's a, it's a sight to behold, it's beautiful. And they are talking about it's all dilapidated, I'm sitting here listening to that, and that's a shame. It's beautiful, man, you ought to see how they, when they put them tables up there, and then my, my grandson had a repass, my grandson, my great-grandchild had his repass there. There's so many repasses, we've been helping folks, man. We look out for that community, and we got people here that know that. And the only thing we got, what we are trying to say, I sing, and my voice is loud, so forgive me for that. But what I'm saying is this, we have that place for a lot of people in that community. And I got pictures when I go and hand that money out, we don't even know them. We have her to go and find them for us, anybody who would need it, you understand? And we do that, I go and I take the picture, I see the families, but we've been doing that for the last ten years, man. And what I hate is why didn't they come to us first? That's only fair, we've been in there keeping this place up. I've been in there, well, they don't, we don't charge nothing to do it, those are, are commercial units in there, and, and I've learned how to do it because we can't pay, you know, we, we've been trying to be economical. But the deal is, is this, they should have come to us, man, using ethics, and I'm sorry for saying that, but using eth, that's unethical, they not coming to us at least to say, "Give us a chance to buy it." 'Cause it's thirty people can buy it by themselves. In our building, individuals can afford to handle what they just said at cost, and we would have done that. But we wasn't offered the opportunity to do that, because we'd, now they say it's been out there for two years. I ain't the brightest candle on the cake, you understand, I'm not the brightest candle on the cake, 'cause we're senior citizens that's doing this, and we ain't all on that funding on Facebook and all that stuff. You come to me, you can come to me and say, "Hold up, we've been there, we ain't going nowhere." We've been there ten years paying all them bills, when we first got there, the bill was so high, we start not even do it. But we hung in there, you hear me? We hung in there, and now we got it looking so nice, we got a seventy-five or eighty-inch television on the wall. We got all kind of stuff we've done. Uh, now they told us the city would do the big things if something happened, they said something really big happened, we'll fix it. That's what was told to these, these individuals when they gave us the building, you understand? But they had never done anything, a tree was on it, we got it off of there. We got, I'm just telling you, everything that's happened to it, we've done it. Now you gonna just say it's for sale and we don't see it? They already, I don't nobody know, don't nobody up here know because all this happened long time ago. Some of y'all wasn't born, I'm just telling you, so this happened a long time ago, and these people know what the deal is here. Don't many know, I know who wrote it up. See, Earl, he was with us, he's gone, he got sick, but it's a lot of things that's going on that a lot of people don't know, and they just gonna come and say they know, they don't know what happened back then. Well, we know, I was, my partner, when we play card, we play B and Wiz, yeah, we play B and Wiz. That's a game that didn't cost but a dollar for the card, we was raised up off of that, and we love it now. We ain't got to get them games, they pay a hundred dollar for one game, you can get a dollar, a deck of cards, and we have a wonderful turn. You understand, we have seven, sometimes six, seven ta, tables up. We got lawyers in there, we got congressmen in there, we got preachers in there. We, don't let me get, you know, I do that Martin Luther King, don't make me get off on him today. But I'm trying to tell you that it's, it's, it's not just no little place to us. So don't just go acting like it is and what you wanna do with it. We, what we wanna do with it... We, what we wanna do with it, what we are already doing with it, means a whole lot to a whole lot of people. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. President, can I call for the vote?
Well, I've got a question.
Okay.
So, in response to Mr. Payne's, um, statement, is there any record of an agreement between the organization that he represents in the city of Birmingham?
No, sorry, there is no agreement.
Okay. Mr. President, I'd like to call for the vote.
All right, Mr. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
One second, please. Voting should be open, um, Councilmember Smith is absent, Councilmember Tate is absent, and, how would you like to vote, Council Williams, I'm sorry?
I don't know.
Okay, thanks, sir. Uh, Council Clark, all right. I think that's everybody, Council Moore.
Ah.
All right. That vote should be up.
All right, that motion passes, it's unanimous, thank you. Next item.
All right, uh, first, well, second item, I'm sorry, should be item sixteen. Item sixteen, an ordinance authorized the mayor upon receipt of payment in the amount of five thousand three hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-five cents to execute a quitclaim deed to Coco Properties LLC for the sale of property legally described as block two forty-two, lot thirteen, North Birmingham, map one, page one eleven, in the office of the Judge of Pro Bay, Jefferson County, Alabama, parcel ID number twenty-two zero zero fourteen four zero one three zero zero four point zero zero zero, city account thirty-one twenty, and located at twenty-seven twenty-five, twenty-seventh Street, North Birmingham, which was acquired by the city upon foreclosure of municipal improvement liens, according to section three dash one dash four C of the general code of the city of Birmingham, and to entertain today, I need UC, permanent operation item.
Paul Shepherd, UC.
Second.
That was Councilpro...
Alexander, and seconded by Clark.
Clark, okay. Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Tate is out, Smith is out, Williams is out, Williams, Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods, he's out. Councilpro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Oakley.
Aye.
All right, that, now I need a motion on that.
Olivia, second.
That was Williams and Alexander.
All right, um, for some reason, I keep having Williams out, hold on a second here. All right, now I got you.
Any questions? Yes, Council Williams.
Just wanted a real, real, real brief explanation of what this is.
Corrected, please. Yes, sir, Council Williams, we'll get staff to come down right now, just a second.
Yes, Jim Stanley from the Office of the City Attorney. Council Williams, I couldn't hear your question outside.
Just, you're extremely brief, in five sentences, I realize, we're okay.
Yeah, uh, the city has a number of properties where we've had demolition liens typically that had been foreclosed, and there's a procedure in the city code that is effectively an extended rite of redemption period, so a party with an interest in the property can come in and basically make the city hollow, pay off the assessment costs, interest, and some of the cost of sale, and get a quitclaim deed. We're not conveying clear title, but we convey the city's interest in the property, so that's what's being done here.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, any additional questions? Seeing none, we're ready for the vote.
Yeah, how would you like to vote, Council, let me take. All right, got it, okay. Councilmore, Woods is absent. Uh, Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore? All right, that vote should be up.
Yep, items unanimous, that item passes, next item.
Should be item seventeen, an ordinance approving and authorizing the mayor to execute and redevelop an agreement with North Star Soccer Ministries, under which North Star Soccer Ministries want to take a project and purchase two vacant lots known as forty-five twenty in forty-six oh one fourteenth Avenue, North Birmingham, Alabama, three five two one two. The organization will develop a soccer complex that will provide soccer-driven programs to serve the youth and their families in the city of Birmingham. The city has agreed to make the property available to North Star Soccer Ministries at a use value of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in support of the project and utilizes, and the project and make the property available to North Star Ministry at the use value of, I'm sorry, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in support of the project and utilizes amendment number seven seventy-two, as it relates to the difference in the appraised value to support the economic development of the new business enterprises in the city, and eliminating blight and blighting factors through the productive reuse of vacant and underutilized property, all of which is, which inure to the, uh, economic health of the city and constitute important public benefits to the city and its citizens. This is another item of permanent operation, I need UC to pass.
Yeah.
All right, take up today, I'm sorry.
Bishop, for UC.
Second.
Williams and Tate.
Williams, Tate. All right, uh, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Uh, don't have UC, so it'll be carried over to, uh, next week.
Rest of the votes.
Oh, go ahead.
Councilmember Smithman is abs, absent, Councilmember Tate.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Oakley.
Aye.
All right.
UC on item seventeen?
Yes.
We're on seventeen.
Aye.
So we did not receive unanimous consent, so it'll be carried over to next week. Next item.
All right, so we're moving to, looks like item nineteen. Let me get my paper out here, item nineteen. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a funding agreement with Birmingham Bound Incorporated, under which Birmingham Bound Incorporated should plan, execute and host events at the two thousand and twenty-four South by Southwest Conference from March the eighth through March the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, to recruit and attract scaling and growing businesses to expand or relocate, relocate their businesses to Birmingham. The city will provide incentives to Birmingham Bound Incorporated in the form of a two, twenty-five thousand dollar sponsorship, a personal, and to amendment seven seventy-two. Hosted events will generate revenue, will provide positive publicity for the city, and I need a motion, please.
Motion to approve, second.
Clark and Abbott.
Clark, Abbott, item is before you for discussion.
Chief Sparks.
Yes, sir, Council, Council President, uh, we have Mr. Coryate Hauser, who's available to answer the questions the council may have.
Council Moore, while Mr. Hauser is coming to the mic.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, I know I saw this item and, you know, thought that it was a great thing, and so just wanted to make sure that, you know, we had an opportunity to hear more information about how we're further promoting Birmingham, uh, in this tech space, and so...
Absolutely, uh, good morning, I'm Coryate Hauser, I serve as Deputy Director for the Department of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. Uh, what's before you today is a partnership with Birmingham Bound to further recruit tech companies into Birmingham at South by Southwest, which is one of the, um, southeast or southwest, uh, premier conferences that they have, so it's a, spans over a couple of weeks, uh, but we are particularly hosting a Birmingham Day, uh, in addition, uh, to the city of Birmingham, Miss Tech Birmingham, Innovation Depot, Southern Research, and a lot of other partners to show up as One Birmingham to recruit companies and let them know about Birmingham, uh, and that we're open for business. Last year, we were able to recruit one company, uh, from that conference to Birmingham, and this year, as we're showing up for an eight or ten-hour, uh, day, we hope to recruit more than one, uh, maybe five or ten of them, uh, so that's the purpose of, of this, uh, particular sponsorship, is that we show up as One Birmingham to let them know that we're open for business.
Councilmore?
Only other thing, uh, I know that South by Southwest, they have several different days that they focus on, you know, certain aspects, uh, most people probably known for, you know, the mo, movies and music, uh, portion, but is this gonna take place during the educational, uh, portion of South by Southwest?
Yeah, so it's on March eighth, uh, that Friday, it's kind of right before all of that happens, we'll be there all day from eight to eight, eight AM to eight PM, uh, hosting a Birmingham Day for those to come in and learn more about Birmingham.
Cool, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, I don't see any other questions, uh, I believe we're ready for the vote.
All right. Voting should be open. Councilmember, are you still down?
Still. Aye.
Okay. I'm sorry. Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
All right, that vote should be up.
But item is unanimous and passes, next item.
Should be going to item twenty-three. Let's see, that's on page thirty-two. Item twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement between the city of Birmingham and I C Me Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, under which I C Me Incorporated will implement its first library program, which will provide underserved youth in the city of Birmingham with their very own home library, in the effort to build, uh, their sense of belonging, self-esteem, and value in the world to address disparities in educational outcomes that predate, uh, the pandemic and amplified its impact on underserved youth. Each first library, uh, will include five books carefully selected to reflect each child's image, culture, and/or experience and language. Motion, please.
Abbott and Williams?
Yeah, item is before you.
All right, questions? Council Woods?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, uh, very excited about this opportunity, I wanted to, I want to invite, uh, Ms. Devon Frazier, uh, with I C Me up to the podium, but, uh, while she comes, this is basically, in reading over the years, one of the things that I've seen, uh, that has consistently been linked to, uh, young people and their educational success is the number of books in the household, uh, that's one, one thing that kind of correlates cons, consistently, uh, to success, and so, you know, we were fortunate to get some ARPA dollars here, and this was one of the projects I wanted to take up, so I reached out, uh, to somebody who I thought could help, and, uh, she put together a really good plan, um, to be able to get, uh, books out to five hundred, uh, students in, in District One, and so, uh, would love for you to go deep into it.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Investing in Birmingham's children is a top priority of I C Me Inc. While countless challenges face our educational system, the goal of I C Me Inc. is ensuring that literacy will not serve as a stumbling block for our children in pursuing their life's goals. A two-decade-long study found that the mere presence of a home library increases children's academic success, vocabulary development, attention, and job attainment. The Alabama Literacy Act was passed in twenty nineteen to help improve reading in Alabama's public schools, to ensure students are reading on grade level by the end of third grade. Reading is the gateway to lifelong achievement. Currently, forty-nine percent of Alabama children are not grade-level proficient. According to data from the twenty-twenty-one A-CAP Summit of Assessment, sixty-eight percent of black students and sixty-four percent of students living in poverty are not proficient in reading. Although low-income children have an average of four children's books in their home, a team of researchers concluded that nearly two-thirds, or sixty-one percent, of, um, students living in low-income families own no books in their home. That was a study by the U.S. Department of Education, and as an educator for twenty-three years, I concur that, I've seen it on a daily basis. First Library, one of our staple programs, ensures that pre-K and kindergarten children get off to a great start by creating their very own home library. Each book is carefully selected to allow mirrors of opportunity for each child. These books reflect each child's image, culture, and/or experience and language. This is our way of building their sense of belonging, self-esteem, and value in the world. To date, we have placed over eleven thousand books in the hands of children through this program and other projects like our Big Five, um, Parent Workshop, which is grown out of, um, First Library grew out of that, our annual literacy summit, and programs like Real Man Read, which District One has participated in the past. First Library will gift five hundred students with the gift of literacy. Each child will receive a book bag, books, a mini book buddy, which is like a little doll that they can hold and read to and practice their reading with, bookmarks, multicultural crayons, so that they can use other colors and draw on themselves, a diverse coloring book, and bracelet. The most successful way to improve reading achievement of low-income children is to increase their access to print. With your support, we plan on continuing our mission on doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to, uh, share that information, I think it's important, and, and, like I said, it takes a lot of different people tapping in to really impact this literacy issue, and so, uh, we just want to add some more, uh, tools to the toolbox, so, thank you all.
Thank you. Definitely want to thank you guys for also doing the showings of the, the movie, which I'm blanking on the name of. The Right to Read, yes, um, excellent, uh, movie documentary, um, about how we teach kids to read in, in, uh, the United States, and how that curriculum, uh, the one that we've been using traditionally is very flawed, especially in BIPOC communities, so, um, thank you, Councilor Woods, also, uh, I think this is an excellent project, um, especially for the Chair of our Workforce Development Committee, so, uh, thank you for taking this initiative and, and working on a extremely important issue in the city of Birmingham. All right, I believe we're ready for the vote.
Voting should be open. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
All right, that vote should be up.
All right, uh, is unanimous, and, uh, item passes. Next item.
Should be item twenty-four. A resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute for, and as the act of said city, a project funding agreement with Country Kitchen LLC, under which Country Kitchen will undertake a project that will involve the hiring of an additional five employees at the Country Kitchen Restaurant located at one oh one Forty-Street South, Avondale, and the city will provide financial incentives to Country Kitchen under amendment seven seventy-two, and the rise program in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars in support of the project. Motion, please. Motion, please.
Alexander and Tate.
Item is before you.
Council Williams?
So I took this off, uh, the consent, um, because this item did go to, uh, Economic Development Tourism Committee. Is there something? Okay. Uh, it did go to Economic Development and Tourism Committee, and there was not a recommendation given from that, um, committee on that, which is not noted on, um, on here, so I just wanted to point that out. Committee on that, which is not noted on um, on here, so I just wanted to point that out. Okay.
Any, uh, Counselor Moore?
Uh, just wanted to ask, was there a reason that there was no recommendation?
Yeah, because we had um. Only two members, um, and one voted it up and one did not, um. As a stalemate, we had no recommendation.
Any further discussion? If not, we're ready for the vote.
Councilmember Moore. Can you get his? That vote should be up.
All right, item is unanimous and is approved. Next item, please.
Item 25. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement. Between the city of Birmingham and Master Solutions LLC. In an amount not to exceed $85,000, on which. Master Solutions LLC will provide professional consulting. Services to leverage relationships with other governmental entities. Nonprofit and for-profit organizations across the city and state to advance the city's economic and community development goals. Motion please.
Abbott and Tate.
Item is before you.
Counselor Woods.
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, wanted to make sure we cleared up the, uh, I guess funded source issue. And I guess if this is someone's project, or someone to claim it, um, before we go forward, but. It's not one of my projects. Uh, definitely think we need as, as many voices representing us as we can get, but uh. I mean, i- if it's, if the, if the funding source can be corrected, let's correct it. If not, we'll need to withdraw it and figure out, um.
I, I believe we corrected the funding source, um, so it is ARPA rec- recovery funds and I believe that the, the GL number. Um, was provided earlier.
Mr. President, I didn't get the GL number. The only thing that I heard was that the funding source.
I have.
Was, but if we could get that, I didn't record it, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Uh, just, just the um. For 25, it is the ARPA recovery. That's what I was told, and then, um, not District One.
Right, and does the, is the GL number listed in the summary?
And uh.
Correct, or does that need to be corrected?
The GL number listed uh on the item is correct. Um, the project. Under that GL is revenue recovery. And um, it's a long string of account numbers, but it represents uh revenue recovery. For this GL account that's listed.
Counselor Williams.
Uh, thank you. So, um, uh, chiefs, what, what admit, uh, committee did this go to?
Let me confirm with Chris Hatcher, just a second.
And then, what, what's actually, what, what is this? Like, what are we doing?
We'll get Mr. Hatcher to speak to it right now.
Okay.
Mr. Hatcher. Good morning. I think it's.
Good morning.
Just still morning.
Yes, it's just about.
A few minutes left of morning.
All right.
Go ahead.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I didn't hear the full question.
Uh, Counselor Williams is asking, um. About, you know, what's going on here? What are we asking, uh, Master Solutions to do?
And does it go to?
In this agreement, and.
And what committees it went to?
Okay, normally, this is a professional services agreement under a certain amount, so normally. We could just do it under the professional services. It was put on council agenda, it should have gone either to budget. It could have gone to either Budget of Finance or Economic Development, but it came straight to council. Uh, as for what the project is, what we are uh contracting with Master Solutions to do. You know, in addition to ARPA administration, uh, I'm also have an unofficial title as the uh infrastructures are. And under that title, my responsibilities are to coordinate uh our efforts to pursue uh competitive grants. Competitive grant efforts out of the bill, uh, which is the Transportation Infrastructure Authorization Act. And out of the um Inflation Recovery Act. That takes a lot of coordination with organizations outside of the city of Birmingham. Uh, many of our quasi-juridicial organizations like uh BJCTA. Airport Authority, Birmingham Waterworks Board, as well as other nonprofit and other state entities to pursue some of these grant opportunities. So, we, as you know. Via ARPA, how thin we are as far as staff capacity to administer all of the funds that we have currently. So, we contract with Master Solutions to help coordinate our communication and our activity in pursuing some of these. Uh, competitive grant opportunities with federal dollars.
Okay, so Mr. Hatcher, it was my understanding from the U.S. Treasury Guidelines. That all of the ARPA projects must be voted on by the body of government, so that. Meaning that, that the council and the city of Birmingham's. You know, would have to vote on all ARPA projects. Is that, is, is that a misunderstanding on my part?
That is correct. You are voting on it, but since these are revenue recovery laws, which means that. Under ARPA, you know, we allocated 42-plus million dollars to um. Help fill the gap in lost revenue, the city's lost revenue for ARPA. Those funds can be used essentially as the city's general fund dollars.
Okay, so this is, so this is being used as lost revenue.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And I thought that the lost revenue, so I'm confused now, but I thought that the law, and so correct me. Or help me understand. I thought that the lost revenue funds were. Sent already to our city employees in the form of. Um, and I don't know if we called it additional payment, um, while they worked during COVID. Prem, yeah, I thought that that's how those funds were used and that's how, from my recollection, that's what I voted on. And so, I'm confused what the lobbyist here, we're voting on today, is going to do.
Okay, so, excuse me for, I'm just getting over a cold. So, the employee assistance. That's only a portion of funding where the revenue loss was utilized for. So what you all voted on. With revenue loss was assistance across, across several buckets. Some of the revenue loss was used for. Preparation for the World Games, getting venues and those facilities up to par for the World Games. Uh, employee assistance, as you said, was another uh bucket that the funding, the revenue loss funding can be used for. Uh, in addition to that, there's various economic and community development activities that could, could be used for. Uh, also, you approve a portion of those funds being used for grant match. That will allow us, the city of Birmingham, to go after uh and provide match for some of these high, very high dollar. Um. Competitive grants that we have been very successful in receiving. So. The lobbyists or, or Master Solutions funding will come from that grant match pool, under the revenue loss recovery.
Okay. I think that this needs to go through the proper channel of going through the committee process, um. To vote on this. It was my understanding anyway that these, that every ARPA funding dollar had to be voted on by. The council from the Treasury Guidelines, and so, I. You know, I think it, even for, just to be proper, should go through our committee process.
So I'll take that as a motion, but before we go to the second, Counselor Clark, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, Mr. Hatcher, on the contract before us, when it gets to the scope on Exhibit A, that page is blank. Is there gonna be like a, a definitive scope, like specific projects, or will you? Is, is it just generally that they're gonna help, you know, that Master Solutions is gonna help? As opportunities we want to pursue within this period? Is there a concrete number of opportunities or relationships? Um, I mean, is it more defined?
Mr. Hatcher, before you answer that, so, I think if we allow this to go to committee, we'll get some responses to that, that question, so.
We could get that, okay.
I second the motion.
All right, so Counselor Williams has motioned and uh, Pro Tem Alexander has seconded to send the.
There's a question on the motion of what committee?
I think that, um, we could do a. Uh, Budget and Finance, unless Budget and Finance doesn't want to hear it.
Since I'm on it, I'll just say, I think we'd like to hear it because I did find a list of what's supposed to be done. It's right after the transparency and right before the W9. Um, but I still don't know what he's gonna be doing.
Okay, so we have.
Exactly, so it would be good for it to go to committee and we can ask questions.
My, uh, motion is that it goes to B enough.
Right. Motion to second to send the item, refer the item to the Budget and Finance Committee.
All right. Voting should be up. Are you still down?
All right, that. Vote is up, it's unanimous and is approved. Next item.
Item 26, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute. An agreement with McWayne's Science Center, under which McWayne's Science Center will implement. The Dropping Science Exhibition and Programs. Which will encourage businesses to use science, technology, engineering, and math. Uh, principles for creative and expressive interactions with the technology, technologically advanced interactive exhibits. Inspired by hip-hop cultural movement. For a term of three years, the city agrees to pay in a amount not to exceed $450,000 for the services. Provided pursuant to Amendment Number 772. Motion please.
Move the on.
Alexander and Moore.
Item is before you.
All right, any questions? Is anybody here from McWayne? Yes, the McWayne folks are here. Um, so. McWayne Center, of course, is one of the jewels of the city of Birmingham that happens to be located in District Five, um. And I'm really excited about this uh project and could you give us a brief snippet explanation for those folks that may be. Listening?
Absolutely, President O'Quinn, members of the council. I'm Amy Templeton, I'm president and CEO at McWayne Science Center, and thank you for the opportunity to be here to talk about something that we're very excited about too. Uh, Dropping Science, um, as the, the motion um says, is um. An opportunity to introduce STEM principles to young people through the medium of hip-hop music and culture. Um, it's a permanent um exhibit that would be designed about 7,000 square feet. That would include the pillars of hip-hop, um, including um knowledge, including DJing, including emceeing and, um. And it, it, in each of those stations, uh, young people would learn about hip-hop, but during that would also learn about STEM. Because there's so much STEM in hip-hop. Uh, whether that's math and the rhythms and the beats, or whether that's um engineering and technology. And the coding of um drum machines and um. Whether that is innovation in using, taking a turntable that was meant to be a playback device and turning it into a musical instrument. Um, and so, we are especially excited about using hip-hop as that medium because it allows us. To expand our reach into um, reaching more to some of the young people that we. Um, would like to serve even more. One of those groups certainly is children of color. Um, as you all know, hip-hop is a black-led movement. Now, it is, it has been wildly popular for 50 years of people of all races. But, um, it is a black-led movement and we are excited about being able to put this. Um, to, to introduce this um to young children of color. It also allows us to extend our age group. Um, we tend to serve mostly elementary and middle school. But we believe this will um, will appeal to middle school, high school, and even beyond that. Um, like I said, hip-hop is 50 years old. So, we are um looking forward to, to using this as an opportunity. To help people of all ages, people of all races, see themselves in STEM and see that STEM isn't just. Only something that happens in a lab, in a lab coat, but STEM is something that's part of your life every day.
What's, what's the name of our crew? Counselor Moore?
C, CWA, councils with attitude.
And you all were excellent at our block party, so.
Right. Um, nah, I just want to say, you know, thank you to you all for, you know, bringing this forward and, and. Being creative in how we present STEM uh to our young people. Um, I know that there are. A lot of voices that were, you know, a part of making this happen as well. Um. And so, you know, I, I can't name everybody, but you know, one in particular, you know, T. Marie King. You know, who was very instrumental in having these different conversations along with different DJs, um. Uh, freestyle artists, you know, all, all kinds of folks, and so, um, I don't know if you could name off some of those folks, but you know.
Eric could come up and name specifically the folks that are here, but while he's coming up, I will say. That we have an advisory committee made up of community leaders in all of the various ar- um, areas of hip-hop, music, and culture. And um, we are very excited about partnering with them. I also want to mention that our chief designer. Um, because of a grant that we received, a federal grant from IMLS, the Institute of Museum and Library Services. Our chief designer is um Aki Carpenter and her team. She was the principal designer for a majority of the um. Smithsonian Museum of African-American Culture in um, in uh Washington DC. And she is working with President Obama on the Obama Library, so we are thrilled that she is also the principal designer for this exhibit. Um, but I'll let Eric tell you specifically who some of our, members of our committee are.
Yeah, and before he, he does that, I just, I just want to, you know, um, just also say thank you, you know, because. Uh, ca- like Counselor O'Quinn said, we had an opportunity to come to the uh block party that you all had. Um, and you know, really, just kind of give people a snippet of, of what they would be able to experience um with this new exhibit. Uh, I know that, you know, Tennessee has the National Museum of African-American Music. Uh, but it's really cool to know that Birmingham will have its own exhibit that kids will be able to come to. And so, we'll be able to draw people uh to the city uh to be able to experience it.
Absolutely, and it will be unique. There is no other, um, there are plenty of other exhibits about hip-hop. But there are no other exhibits that use hip-hop to teach STEM, and so we will be the first in the country for that.
Well, counselors, um, so some of our advisors, Eugene Wright, uh, we've been working with him for a number of years, um, Lachandra Hemphill. Um, Sean Judah, um, Sean Judah's a, a rapper, Eugene is a rapper and a writer. Um, Lachandra does a hip-hop programming with uh young people in town. Um, and she uh focuses on young girls, teaching them how to make beats, um, and using the equipment. Um, everybody's local, uh, except uh w- one of our advisors is a professor from San Francisco State. Uh, Dr. Fisher specializes in women in hip-hop and international hip-hop, so. You know, one of the things that we had heard from people as we're talking to folks like, oh, hip-hop is misogynistic and is this and is that. It was very important for us to have a strong uh voice, uh, women involved in hip-hop, and so Dr. Fisher has been a, a great perspective. Um, I'm trying to, I'm blanking on some of the other, Winston Strickland, who is the head of uh Mad Skills Dance Troop uh in Irondale. Winston Strickland, who is the head of Mad Skills Dance Troop in Irondale. He is an advisor. And Blake Flowers is a graphic artist, and so he is helping us with the graffiti portion of things. And then all of them, of course, are supporting the culture and have input in those respects. And of course, T. Maurice. And I'm sorry, and a recent addition to the, our advisors is Patrick Johnson. And Patrick was an early hip-hop group here in Birmingham, Red Light District, pretty well-known for people that know hip-hop in Birmingham, so he's been another great asset.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, now remind me what your master's thesis was in?
Yes, I wrote my master's thesis at University of Alabama on hip-hop. And I focused on, you know, in the early 90s, why white folks were so interested in hip-hop and it went from mostly, you know, African-American interest to everybody was jumping in on. So I was just analyzing that, and that was the focus of my thesis.
Nice. Yeah, I think this is a program that, you know, all of Birmingham can be really proud of. How are we doing on the fundraising?
The entire project is about $3.2 million, and we are at $1.2 million. And we'll be going back to the federal grant, the IMLS, to request. What they gave us was a planning grant. We're gonna then request an implementation grant. And then we are also looking for additional sponsorship. We have some corporate sponsorship, some foundations, and continue to look for that. So we're hoping to do this, to complete the project in 2025.
Awesome, thank you. All right, I believe we're ready for the vote. The funding source is, yeah, I just wanna point out that the funding source is ARPO Recovery Funds. Do we need a account number for that?
Eric, you have it?
Okay. So. Mr. Saxon is getting the account number for us. Good. You guys are good, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Mr. President, so as Mr. Saxon looks, Ms. Michelle Inman, our accountant, also can provide the info as well.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Michelle Inman. I serve as the accountant for the mayor's office. And that funding source is from grant expenditures. And you need the number? It's zero zero one, underscore zero one nine, underscore zero 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 eight zero, dot five three six, dash zero four zero.
All right, thank you. All right, now I believe we're ready for the vote.
Okay, a second please. Voting should be opening now.
All right, Counselor Moore is back online. That is unanimous and is approved. Thank you, next item.
I think we're going to twenty-seven. Item twenty-seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, submit, execute, expand itself, and to take any and all actions as are appropriate and necessary in accordance with the terms of the grant submission requirements and grant agreement with the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, fiscal year 2024 recycling grant to promote local recycling efforts by providing reimbursement grants to local governments to develop, implement, and enhance recycling in an amount up to $1,483,573 to programs to expand the city's curbside recycling services and education and outreach campaign at no cost to the city. Motion, please.
Motion on the item.
Second.
Item is before you.
It is Williams and Abbott. Counselor Williams.
I took this off, but Ms. Abbott was so adamant about the second. Would you like to speak first to it?
The recycling is a pet thing of mine, and I was wondering if I had lost my mind because I thought we already got a grant to fund our recycling and that we were actually going to do something, but we haven't done anything. And now we're applying for another one. So what is this one going to be for when we already got the other one?
So, before you speak, Chief Sparks, so I believe the ADEM, this funding program, there's no restriction on subsequent, you know, applications that, you know, it's, we can apply as many often as we like, my understanding. Chief Sparks?
Yes, so we actually have Mr. Terry Davis, that's right, Mr. President, but we have Mr. Terry Davis here to speak to it and answering the questions, but you're right.
Okay.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's not morning anymore, but.
Okay, well, good afternoon, everyone. How about that? My name is Terry Davis, and I'm glad to serve as Deputy Director of Department of Public Works. So this grant is the same that we applied for on last year. And at that time, it enabled us to purchase two new roll-off trucks, which we received the first one on this past Thursday, as a matter of fact. And we have expectations of the other one arriving sometime in the coming weeks. With this new grant, what we, that we are applying for, what we have anticipations of doing is enhancing our recycling program and expanding our recycling program. And with that, we're looking to buy four additional ASLs to use in expanding this program.
Excuse me, could you, I'm not familiar with the ASL term, can you?
Okay, that is the new automated garbage trucks that we have.
Automated side loader.
For the uniform car service that we have implemented here in the city.
Yep, Counselor Williams.
So if the, if the goal of this grant is to buy, if we've used it in the past to purchase garbage trucks and we're using it now in the future to purchase side loader trucks, we know that the city does not have uniform recycling bins. We only have uniform garbage bins. So will the city be issuing uniform recycling bins to go with this grant?
Yes, sir, that is a part of the purchase. We also are looking at getting recycling bins to go along with that, much like when we started the pilot program a few years ago. And we implemented that to get a kickstart on our uniform car program that we currently have in service.
Okay, that's awesome, that's great news. So with this, what is, do we know what the estimated cost is of getting the whole city uniform recycling bins?
Well, that's something I can't provide to you right now, counsel.
Counselor Williams, if I recall correctly, I believe the cost for the uniform bins for garbage was $700,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, that's great news.
So recycle 66-gallon carts, as was provided in the City Hall Pilot Project.
Yes, sir.
And four additional automated side loader trucks.
Correct.
Excellent news. Let's keep our fingers crossed that we get that. Counselor Clark.
So the community education vision, is it to teach why recycling is important, but also how to recycle and what to recycle? Do you know what the vision is for the community education?
I think the vision is for all of the city to recycle. We, much of the education has gone into it. We went through it over the years as we've been recycling for quite a while now. But as we move forward, there'll always be a catalyst for us to train people and get them more acclimated into what recycling is and how we recycle.
Mr. President.
And, you know, I think why it's important too. But I want us to get into this opt-in thing because everybody doesn't recycle. And I feel like our rolling stock pollutes the air, riding around trying to find who's recycling. So I hope we'll get into more of an opt-in. And while I recycle, I don't, I don't put my recycling out each time. I let it a lot accumulate. And sometimes I don't trust y'all to not take it to the landfill, so I deliver it myself to a recycling facility. But I do think that it's important to, while we're saving the earth, you know, the landfill from stuff that can be reused, that we're not just burning a lot of fuel going everywhere for those few people who are recycling.
Chief Sparks has a response.
Yes, so Counselor Clark, to your question, everyone won't be getting cans. It will be an opt-in program. So in addition to the education program, education campaign that you asked about, which the department will be doing, the opt-in option will also help us to know who should be getting the cans and who won't. But we'll do that concurrently with a, with an education campaign. Hopefully, everyone will opt-in, we know they won't, but that's the goal. At least to educate and then allow folks to opt-in so we can know what we're purchasing and why.
Good to hear. As we get closer to that, I mean, we'll have some more questions. Counselor Abbott.
Well, yeah, I would like to see our recycling program do a whole lot better than it's doing. It makes me sad when it's a rainy day and people put out their recycling and you know that the city is gonna take it to the dump or the recycling company's taking it to the dump because all the paper's wet and they say they don't recycle wet paper. So if we don't get a can with a lid on it, a lot of people are doing a lot of work to save their recycling and then they, it goes to the dump. I mean, I do incredible, I recycle everything I possibly can. And then to know that if it rains, it's going, all my work is going to the landfill is just very distressing to me. And so, yeah, I don't take mine out every time because if it's raining, I know what's gonna happen. It's amazing the people that they have no idea they're supposed to clean jars and bottles and cans out before they put them in recycling. They don't know if it gets wet, that it's all gonna go to the dump. They don't know that if they leave half their Coke in the bottle and screw the cap on and throw it in the recycling, it's going to the dump. We don't really seem like we're very interested in recycling. I know we probably are, and I just can't tell it. You know, maybe it's just me. But we need to really take the bull by the horns, and I don't perceive that we're doing it with any great enthusiasm. I know we've got, we need money, we always need money. But why are we buying roll-offs with money for recycling? Because roll-offs are what people put all the trash and garbage in that goes to the dump. So do we have roll-offs for recycling?
So Mr. Davis can speak specifically to the type of bins, but Counselor, I know previously many of the citizens are still using what the containers that the previous administration provided that didn't have covers. And so that didn't help us when it rained to help really protect the effort. So that's a part of this new effort to, one, educate, two, ensure that when citizens do take those necessary steps, that it's worth it because we can now ensure that those items are recycled. So, but Mr. Davis can speak specifically to the type of items we're looking to, I mean, the type of bins we're looking to get.
Well, I'd like to know why we ordered roll-offs that were delivered this week for recycling.
Well, we ordered roll-offs because it's gonna help enhance our recycling system as it is now. We wanna be able to serve all citizens at all times. And what the roll-offs do, it gives us a bigger load of stuff. We can dump off at one place and then put it on the roll-off and that roll-off can securely and dryly take it to the recycling centers where it can be recycled.
So just in response to that, when I've visited the landfill, at the landfill, there are actually roll-off containers for recycling. Is that correct? Yes.
Out in the weather?
Not necessarily, no man. Most of it's gonna be metal recycling anyway at the landfill.
Okay, so it's not, it's not for citizen recycling, it's for people who get scrap metal.
No, these containers are the roll-off containers like you would typically see for recycling that have individual bins, you know, within the roll-off container, you know, a space for plastics, a place for metals, what other, cardboard. So. So it's not exposed to the weather.
Well, I think we, as a city council, need some education on what the heck we're doing because clearly a lot of us are confused, and I'll raise my hand as being one of the first. So could we get an overview of what our plan is? I'm sure someone has it.
Yes, good afternoon, agents. Did I serve as the director of the Grants Division in our finance department? Those, the bins that we are speaking of, they will have your tops on them. They're gonna be smaller bins than the new bins that we have right now for the, for our, for our regular garbage. So these are a little smaller than that, but they do have those tops. So there will be covering so that the trash will not get wet. So this is a part of that. Even with the previous grant, that was the same type of bin that we were, we are purchasing.
And Mr. President, Counselor Abbott, to your point, we will have the PW follow-up with the council to coordinate what you just asked for, which is a request for how is the campaign gonna work and what's all included. We'll make sure that that's done upon the director's return.
Well, that's good because some of us need to know, some obviously know more than others, but we all need to know the same thing, or at least have been exposed to it. Because I don't know about y'all, but, you know, my constituents are asking when we're gonna modernize and start, you know, doing it. And I can't answer the question, I don't have a clue. I mean, I didn't know we were buying roll-offs with our recycling money. I'm glad if they're covered, but didn't know it.
Counselor Clark.
We're also looking for a chief sustainability officer, which is very good news. I mean, that's kinda related.
I think we're ready for the vote.
Thank you.
Should be open.
I didn't take it off consent.
All right, that vote should be up.
All right, that vote is up and is unanimous, and that item is approved.
All right, it should be at item thirty-one. A resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for, submit, execute, expand itself, and to take any and all actions as are appropriate and necessary in accordance with the terms of the grant submission requirements and grant agreement with the Department of Homeland Security, U.S., fiscal year 2023 FEMA Building, Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Direct Technical Assistance Grant in an amount up to $222,850, where they require the city match not to receive $55,712.50 to receive site investigations, topographic surveys, engineering studies, project design support, and hydrology studies for the identified potential flood mitigation measures in the Shuttlesworth Park area and within the Jefferson County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Motion, please.
I'm of approval.
Second.
Everybody motioned, everybody seconded.
I'll just pick. Counselor Abbott and Counselor Moore. Item is before you.
I believe Counselor Moore, go ahead.
So I know Counsel Smithman took it off of consent, but, you know, it definitely was something that I wanted to be able to speak to, seeing as how it touches District Four and touches those areas that are in Collegeville, and I wanna say also Kilo Springs. And so we'd love for, you know, somebody to come and just kinda speak, speak to this item and tell us. item and tell us exactly.
Yes, sir. Let's Counselor Moore, where, where exactly is this located? I'm looking for Shuttlesworth Park.
So there is no Shuttlesworth Park, so, um, it, it says Shuttlesworth Park area, so I'm assuming that this is touching both Harriman Park, Macklin Park, uh, I know that Five Mile Creek, uh, is also included as, in this as well and so, um, I just.
Yes, sir. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
So Ms. Tracy Hayes from our Department of Planning, Engineering and Permits is here to speak to, to answer your questions, Counselor Moore.
Yeah, because I wasn't aware of a Shuttlesworth Park.
Hi, good mo-, oh, good afternoon. Uh, my name is Tracy Hayes and I serve as one of the deputies for the Department of Planning, Engineering and Permits. There is not a Shuttlesworth Park. That area was, um, part of a EPA Direct Technical Assistance that was reimagined. So it's the area in between the New Bethel and Macklin Park. And your partic-, your question, sir, I'm sorry.
So roughly Twenty-seventh Avenue in the vicinity of Thirty-first Street North, um, and, yes, and Bethel is on Thirty-third Street North, so. A his, area of, that has historically had flooding issues.
Yes, sir.
All right. No additional discussion, I believe we're ready for the vote.
Thank you.
Okay.
That vote should be up.
All right, that is unanimous, the item is proved. Next item.
It should be that for the regular items, um, did you have some other item?
Okay, so, uh, brings us to, um, we need to reconsider the, uh, consent agenda, so motion to reconsider the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Um, all right, so that passes and, um, we need to revisit, uh, item number six and delete under item number six, number one forty-five. Trying to give you all page number.
Page nine.
Page, page nine, all right.
Okay, see it.
Page nine, so, um, motion to approve the consent agenda minus item one forty-five under item six.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, saying nay.
All right, so consent agenda is approved. That should bring us to the end of our regular business items, um. Counselor Woods, do you have announcements?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, quickly, uh, we lost a, uh, really important figure out in District One, uh, Mr. Sylvester Hollis, uh, passed away last week. Uh, he was a educator Birmingham City Schools for about thirty-four years, I think, when he retired in two thousand and three. Uh, as a principal, he was a area director, um, and his wife, Ms. Mary Hollis, uh, over in Echo Highlands. Um, yeah, so got a chance to go by and just talk to them this weekend and, and she's doing well, but I've always appreciated both of them because they're, they're one of the few folks, I know we all do a similar job, but, um, she's one of those people that'll send a letter and just, you know, say thank you for what you're doing and things like that and so I really appreciate that. I would like to ask for a resolution of sympathy on behalf of Mr. Sylvester Hollis and, uh, actually you see it this time.
Motion for unanimous consent.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, now the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, thank you very much.
Yes.
A couple of additional announcements I want to share, uh, Kilo Springs Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six PM at Smith Middle School. Uh, the B Litter Free, uh, Cleanup will continue on this Saturday, February seventeenth at nine AM. Uh, this will begin at Calvary Resurrection Christian Church, invite everyone out to continue these efforts. Also, the Penny Foundation Future Forward Grant Application Deadline is tomorrow. Uh, so if you haven't already done so, make sure that you get, uh, plugged in. Uh, also, uh, we'll be hosting, uh, we'll call it the Contractors Breakfast, uh, that'll be on Thursday, February twenty-second at eight AM. Uh, basically what this is, just a networking opportunity for, uh, contractors. I think we've had a lot of conversation around how can we lift up disadvantaged contractors, minority contractors, and so really inviting, uh, you know, contractors across all spectrums, uh, we'll have some, uh, speakers just providing information on what resources are currently available. Uh, I know the city and some other entities are all working to, uh, create more resources, but there are some things that are available now and we want to make sure that everybody's maximizing, uh, what's available now. So inviting out, uh, really all contractors, that will be, uh, Thursday, February twenty-second, eight AM at Uptown Jazz and so, uh, be a, be a quick program, want to make sure we get good information out and give you opportunity to network with people that, uh, may be where you want to get to, um, give you feedback on how to scale, how to build your, uh, base so you can grow your business in the future. And so that is going to be again, uh, Thursday, February twenty-second at eight AM. Uh, then I want to take a point of, uh, personal privilege and, uh, shout out my son, uh, Clinton, he's, he's five years old, man, he's been doing a, a really good job, really proud of him. Uh, I don't, and I don't, I'm not sure if I've ever told this story, but, uh, I kind of got here through a, a different route, I got appointed, um, and I remember the day I got appointed, uh, when they voted here because like, as soon as I left here, man, my wife had to go to the hospital, she was pregnant, uh, and she had got a call, they were kind of worried about some, uh, pregnancy issues and, and kind of, you know, told her he, there was some potential for like birth defects and things like that. And so he's fine, you know, we, you know, fortunately have, uh, you know, folks of strong faith, but he would, he were able to kind of get through that, but he's fine, but, uh, it just kind of made me reflect, he took his first test in, uh, pre-CA and got a hundred and knows all the sight words and so we were, uh, very, very, very proud of you young fellow, so keep growing. Uh, my sister's birthday was yesterday and so I made him stand on the chair and do his, uh, his Black History speech he has to memorize and, uh, he's, he's like me, he was shy, like he's, he's not as shy as I was growing up, but he stood up and he, he belted it out, so I was, I was proud of him, so, uh, sent a little shout out to the young fellow, five years old. Keep up the good work.
Awesome. Definitely one of the most beautiful families in the city of Birmingham, can attest to that. Counselor Tate.
Mr. President, real quickly, North Birmingham Neighborhood Meeting has been rescheduled for tonight. Um, it's going to be held at the North Birmingham Library, address is twenty-five oh one Thirty-first Avenue North. Sandusky Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight, six PM, that's conference call. You can dial in by calling three one nine five two seven nine six four two. North Prep Neighborhood Meeting will be held tonight at six PM at New Haven Apartments, Thirteen Avenue W. Ansley Neighborhood will be held on Thursday at six PM at the Ansley Rec Center, twenty-eight-hundred Avenue K. The next Public Safety Meeting will be held on Tuesday, February the twenty-seventh at one PM. Please submit, um, agenda items by email Wednesday, February the twenty-first, no later than twelve noon, to the following recipients, patrice.collins@birminghamal.gov, gregory.stanley@birminghamal.gov. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. Counselor Williams.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, quick reminder that Restaurant Week's Winter Edition is back and that's February twenty-second through March the first. Um, and this is one of my favorite events because, uh, as we all know, one of Birmingham's, um, best assets is our culinary scene, uh, our restaurants and our food. And so this is an awesome opportunity to get, uh, deals and specials and be able to experience, um, maybe that restaurant you have not tried or a deal on a restaurant that you go to and probably paid more for for whatever meal you get. So it's February twenty-second through March the first, um, and they haven't released the participants yet, um, so looking forward to seeing what restaurants, food trucks and bars will be participating in that.
All right, thank you, Counselor Williams. Pretem Alexander.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. These are the announcements for District Seven. We have two neighborhood meetings today. The East Brownsville Neighborhood will meet via conference call at five thirty. The Riley Trevalik Neighborhood will meet at six PM at Noble Chapel CME Church and that is on, on Maple Avenue Southwest. On Thursday, we have neighborhood meetings, the Hillman and Hillman Park Neighborhood Joint Meeting will be held at five PM and Germania Park meets by conference call. On Friday, February sixteenth, the Garden Highlands Neighborhood Association meets at four PM at Mount Hill at Baptist Church and on Monday, we have bulk trash pickup in several neighborhoods, West Goldwire, Topless City, Industrial Center and Garden Highlands. As was mentioned, how many hours ago? Early this morning, um, it was mentioned that, uh, Mayor Whitton will be hosting Town Hall in District Seven and that's next week, Thursday, February twenty-second at Greater Shiloh Missionary Baptist Church and that will be at six PM on Jefferson Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Pretem Alexander. Counselor Abbott.
Thank you. See about this thing. See how far back I can get. Um, the next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is tomorrow, Valentine's Day. At three thirty PM in the council chambers, we have the city's landscaping ordinance to review. I think it's been sent to all members of the council to take a look at it and make sure there's nothing in there that gives you deep heartburn. Um, on last week, uh, Coffee with Code Enforcement, I attended the one at the Botanical Gardens. It was excellent. It was definitely not a drop-in anytime you feel like it, it was a get there at ten o'clock and leave at twelve. Um, there was so much information, you really need to, to attend it twice and I was very impressed, so I hope that they continue it through, uh, using different means as we were told by Ms. Williams that they would use some different ways of doing it so that people who can't be there from ten to twelve can still get the information. Um, let's see, neighborhood meetings tonight, we have Highland, uh, Highland Park Neighborhood Meeting at the Highlands Rac-, Racket Club, they're meeting downstairs instead of upstairs due to a burst pipe, I think they said. It's at six o'clock, East Avondale is at the exact same time, six o'clock, but they meet via conference call. Um, I want to say congratulations to Stivers Ford who opened in the Palisades and, uh, they are the largest Ford dealer in Alabama. So District Three has something but almost as big as Vulcan to, uh, to brag about and a, a car needs some work, so I'll be going in and trying to find where to go. So, um, today's addendum was a good example of why we shouldn't have them unless they're dire emergencies and, um, you know, we should hold off until people give us all the information we need, right? Um, the three one one, My Beham three one one is better than C Click Fix, so if you still have C Click Fix on your phone, you need to get the official My Beham three one one app and use it instead of continuing to use the old one, even though both of them reportedly go to the same place. Uh, but I do encourage people to add that app to their phone so you can include photographs with all of your complaints. And that is it for me, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Moore?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. So first thing first, uh, as has already been mentioned, we have Kilo Springs Neighborhood Association Meeting taking place tonight at Smith Middle School. We also have, uh, Northeast Lake, uh, taking place tonight at the Southern Museum of Flight along with Penfield Park and Brownsville Heights Community Center. Uh, the Community Development Committee will meet, uh, in council chambers at two PM, uh, on February the twenty-first, uh, that is next week. And so, uh, if you would like to, uh, have, uh, an item to be considered, please make sure that you email adairsmay@adairs.may@birminghamal.gov. Um, I also wanted to inform, um, residents of District Four and more specifically in Northeast Lake that we actually have some good news. I was informed by the Park and Rec Board that, uh, we will be having those lights in that park repaired, which is a huge, huge deal. Um, and it's something that I know a lot of people have reached out to me about and so, um, definitely thankful for, uh, the staff over at, uh, Park and Rec for their continued support and help and work that they do. Um, wanted to, um, also raise of a concern to, uh, the mayor's staff, so I know that we've been getting a lot of calls about, uh, resurfacing, street resurfacings and so, um, Zion City Road, Airport Road, Frida Jane Lane and Lawson Road, um, just wanted to see if we can get some, some updates about, uh, what's going on with those. Uh, I know that they've been placed on, uh, previous resurfacing list and so just kind of wanted to, uh, bump that up to you all.
Can you repeat the last two, please, Counselor?
So Zion City Road, Airport Road, Frida Jane Lane and Lawson Road.
Yes, sir.
All right, and outside of that, laissez-le bon, tom roule.
Um, Counselor Moore, are we still looking for lifeguards for our pools? I know there are a lot of young folks who are starting to think about what they're going to be doing this summer, um, in terms of work, uh, so you want to remind them about that opportunity?
Yes, sir. I greatly appreciate you for bringing that back up. Um, please, if you are, uh, interested in serving as a lifeguard, we need your help. Uh, please reach out to Park and Rec, I'm trying to find a number for you, but, uh, if you go to, um, Legion Field, uh, and, and talk to the, the main staff there, they would definitely love to have you serve as a lifeguard. Uh, it's important that we get folks who are interested to serve as lifeguards because that will determine how many pools we are actually able to open up and so if we want to be able to enjoy that amenity that, or those amenities that we have in our city, we need folks that will, uh, come out and work those, those spaces. So if you are interested in serving as a lifeguard, please make sure that you reach out to the staff at Park and Rec to make sure that you can conserve in that capacity. Uh, so thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to start by just, uh, expressing condolences to the long-term Bush Hills Neighborhood Association Secretary, Myra Tarver, on the passing of her sister, Mrs. Dalla Rice, whose funeral was this past weekend. Uh, there are a couple of Neighborhood Association Meetings tonight, uh, well, this week, the Bush, the Bellevue Heights Neighborhood will meet today at Charles Brown Elementary School, so that's in person at six thirty PM. The Central Park Neighborhood will meet on Thursday at six PM at the Five Points West Library. Also want to remind, um, that the Omicron Omega Chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha and the Black Women Lawyers Association of Alabama are hosting a nonpartisan Judicial Candidates' Forum for the Jefferson County Probate Judge Places One and Two. The forum will be held this Thursday, February fifteenth, from five thirty to seven thirty at the Pearl Center located at ten twenty-five Fourth Avenue West in the Bush Hills Neighborhood. Also note that Commissioner Sheila Tyson is hosting a town hall meeting to answer questions on the recent sewer bond debt refinancing. Uh, representatives from the county will be on hand to answer any questions about what this historic event means to residents and ratepayers. Uh, the meeting will happen this Thursday, um, I think that's also the fifteenth, from fi-, from five thirty to seven thirty PM at the Boutwell Auditorium. Also, uh, the Mount Hebron Baptist Church Thomas is hosting their annual health fair on Saturday, February seventeenth, from eleven to two. This event is free and open to the public. You can come out for your Narcan training, I think I said that right. Did I say that right, Brother Walter?
Yes.
Narcan, okay. And that's provided by the Jefferson County Department of Health and there will be health screenings available, uh, performed by the Alabama Regional Medical Services. Um, there's also a big Chinese New Year celebration and I'm sure it will be a wonderful spectacle. I have a conflict and can't go, but it's going to happen at the Boutwell Auditorium from ten to two, Saturday, February seventeenth, um, and that's the Birmingham Chinese New Year Gala. Uh, the admission is ten dollars a person or free admission for children under twelve and they are discounted student tickets. and they are discounted student tickets. Um, finally, I'd like to ask, uh, if we, if I can get unanimous consent for a resolution, uh, of support and welcome for, to Congressman Hakeem Jeffries, who's the, um, Minority Leader of the Hundred Eighteenth Congress.
Motion for UC.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That brings it back to me, um, District Five. So if you live in a neighborhood in, in the city of Birmingham, um, you have a Neighborhood Association that meets on a regular basis and speaks on your behalf. Um, so in District Five, this week, we have East Avondale Neighborhood Association that will be meeting tonight at six PM via conference call. If you want to find out how to join that meeting, please call my office at two five four two six seven nine for information. North Avondale will be meeting on Thursday, February fifteenth, at six PM at the MLK Recreation Center. South Side Neighborhood Association will be, will also be meeting on Thursday, February fifteenth, at six PM at the Birmingham Police Department South Precinct. Uh, also want to remind folks that you have a couple of days left to apply for the Future Forward, uh, Grant Program that's being, um, offered through the Penny Foundation. Um, the application period is open through February fifteenth, Thursday, and then the community voting will take, start taking place on Friday and run through the twenty-fourth. So if you want additional information about this, uh, Future Forward Grant Cycle, the website is www dot futureforwardfund dot org. And the Transportation Committee will meet on Monday, February twenty-sixth at two PM and confer, no, and here in the council chambers, any items that would, uh, need to be submitted to the agenda, please contact Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.phillips@birminghamal.gov. And then finally, um, we've got about fifteen minutes until the Public Safety Committee, uh, starts. I'm sure they're back there getting their lunch, um, of king cake. Uh, so if anybody wants to buy the king cake, we have, yes, Counsel Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I failed to acknowledge Mr. Dwight Hampton, one of my neighborhood presidents, who's been sitting in the audience. Uh, he's president of Fairview Neighborhood in District Eight. Just wanted to say hello.
Hello. Counsel Williams.
I have a motion to.
Second.